They must get their hats on.
There are some cool guys talking in.
Yeah, we're gonna have to get us a hat now.
I may just have to stand up for this.
Oh, Mr. Hawkins.
This is more for your head than...
Good evening, everyone. We proceed each council meeting with a word of prayer and pledge of allegiance. If you'd like to, please feel free to join us.
Ms. Isby, did I ask you to leave a prayer for me?
Sure. If you bow with me, our gracious Father, we thank you for the abundant blessings that you've given us. We just thank you, Lord, for this city that you've made us stewards of. And we just ask, Lord, that everything that we do will be pleasing in your sight. And we just ask, Lord, that you get the glory and the honor in all that we do. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we call this meeting over, I'd like to congratulate our... one of our newest circuit judges, and Conway, our city attorney, Chuck Clausen, will be taking office January 2021. I'll say this on record, but the last time I say it, I really hate to lose him as city attorney because he's really, really good. Congratulations, Chuck.
One too many, really.
Well, now, call this meeting over. Mr. Garrett, please call the roll.
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Isby?
Here.
Okay. You should have received copies of the October 8, 2019, City Council minutes in our special council meeting. Any corrections or changes?
Make a motion for approval as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. No further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero. Next up, we have a part of our standing committees. Mr. Hawkins, we'll turn this part over to you. It's our Economic Development Committee.
Be glad to do that, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hawkins. I jumped ahead of you there, my bad.
That's okay. I'd be glad to do that.
First up, we have the Economic Development Committee. I'll handle that. We have a resolution setting a public hearing to discuss an ordinance to fix rates for services rendered by the wastewater system for Conway Corporation. Mr. Carroll and Mr. Bethay are here. If you... council, if you have any questions.
We're just setting a hearing today, right?
We are. The meeting will be November 26 at 6:30 PM.
That's it.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution setting a public hearing for November 26 at 6:30 PM, 2019, to discuss the wastewater rates per system for the Conway Corporation system. Any further discussion?
And that number is, Mr. Garrett?
The R1964.
Thank you.
If you guys want to say anything, or... it's up to y'all. Just if y'all wanted to say anything.
I guess kind of introduced it. You know, we'll talk more... and by the way, Brett Carroll, 14 Centerfield, Conway Corp CEO. We'll talk more about it at the public hearing, but really, there's three projects kind of driving it. First of all, just aging infrastructure. The need to replace our aging wastewater infrastructure. And then, there's also the main wastewater collection main that runs north and south. We just need to increase the capacity of that main. And then also, we are converting our Tucker Creek wastewater treatment facility into an equalization basin that will help us with more efficient operation of our typical bio-wastewater treatment plan. But the savings related to converting Tucker Creek to an EQ basin over a 30 or 40-year period is about $10 million to our rate payers. So anyway, what that really equates to is kind of a three-phase rate increase. And you might have saw the coverage in the paper today, and it only talked about one year there, but it'll be a three-year phasing approach, which will be about $5.62 per... for the typical residential user per month in the first year, about $2.35 incrementally per month for the typical residential user, and then another $2.33 per month in the third year. So it's a 15% increase the first year, and then 5%, and then 5% in... beginning in January of 2020, January of 2021, and January of 2022, is what we're proposing. That is what our board has approved, and that's what we'll be here to talk about, I guess, on Tuesday, November 26. Does that... does that make sense? Okay.
Counsel, any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. This will be the first reading only, but we'll not take any action on this tonight. An ordinance fixing rates for services rendered by the wastewater system of the city of Conway, Arkansas, prescribing matters relating thereto. And this is only our first reading, so no action is required.
Do we have a fixed ordinance number on this, Mr. Garrett, at this time, or do we do it?
It's got O19104.
Thank you.
All right. Now, Mr. Hawkins?
Very good, Mr. Mayor. And I'm glad all of y'all are here tonight. We've got a jam-packed, jam-up, jelly-tight meeting. Here we go. First thing is an ordinance approving the location transfer of a private club permit for Los Three Patrios of Conway Incorporated. And we have an ordinance to read for this item. It is ordinance O19105.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings. Second?
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passes six to zero. Is anyone here to speak for or against this? Okay, counsel?
Make a motion for adoption of the ordinance. Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Passes six to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor. We have several locations that we are proposing to place a lien against some property because of incurred expenses by the city of Conway. Our first location is at 312 Club Lane. The city has done $148.88 worth of work at that location. Is there a owner... an owner or representative of an owner at 312 Club Lane in Conway in attendance tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone, so we have a resolution for this item. It is Resolution R1965.
Make a motion for adoption of the resolution. Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for property located at 312 Club Lane in the amount of $148.88 for expenses incurred by the city. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes six to zero.
Next location, Mr. Mayor, is at 626 Third Avenue. We've incurred $183.35 of expenses at that location. Is there an owner or representative of an owner at 626 Third Avenue with us this evening? Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone, so this will be Resolution R1966.
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution. Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution for property located at 626 Third Avenue in the amount of $183.35. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes six to zero.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is our next location, is 2131 Poplar. Is there an owner or representative of an owner from 2131 Poplar in attendance tonight? Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone, so this will be Resolution R1967.
Make a motion for adoption. Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution for property located at 2131 Poplar Street in the amount of $224.69 for expenses incurred by the city. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes six to zero.
Next location, Mr. Mayor, is 21 Bernard. 21 Bernard. Is there an owner or representative of an owner from 21 Bernard in Conway with us this Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone. This will be Resolution R1968.
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution. Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution for property located at 21 Bernard in the amount of $260.38. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes six to zero.
And finally, on this number, B2, the address is 2137 Poplar. 2137 Poplar, $294.08. Is there an owner or representative of an owner from 2137 Poplar?
Is that next to 2131? We just did 2131?
Yeah, there's...
Hello?
Same block, it looks like.
These properties located next door to each other, are they...
Two houses.
Okay.
Two apart.
Okay.
Make a motion for adoption of the resolution. Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution of property located at 2137 Poplar Street for expenses incurred by the city. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes six to zero.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution to approve proposal for abatement mowing services for the Conway Enforcement. And this is at... yeah, that's what we have. This is a lot... no particular one, it doesn't look like.
No, this is for services and services. Get someone come in and take care of these properties for us, bush all of them, things like that.
Very good. And we have prices inside the resolution, and this is Resolution R1970. And I'll move for... oh.
Hello.
Hi. Good evening.
So we solicited proposals to create a contract for mowing services. This is both for residential and commercial properties that are in violation of your city ordinance for overgrown vegetation. And we received two proposals, and we're asking you to approve Matt Skelton Construction.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance for proposal for abatement mowing by Matt Skelton Construction for the code enforcement department. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett, would you call the vote, please?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes six to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance appropriating auction proceeds for the permits and inspections department. And we have an ordinance to read for this item. It's ordinance O19105... I'm sorry, 106.
Make a motion to waive the three readings. Second?
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes six to zero.
So this was... well, I want to start off by throwing a number out there. I love to throw this out there because the departments have worked really hard since 2017 to sell assets that we can no longer use that are sitting there and maybe junking up our yards. Today, as of today, this number is 474,731. So they've done a really good job at that.
You've done a good job at that, too.
Well, thank you. But they do most of the lake work on that. So that 7,650 that we're asking to put into the general fund is just part of that permit. Sold a couple trucks that brought that amount, and they need it to replace their repaired equipment budget.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second. So this 474,000 is a line item in the budget now?
No. It's been... well, we started doing this in 2017, so it's basically just revenue that you've seen in the general fund or in the sanitation and street funds. I can show you where it is, and I can show you that detail, but it's citywide.
Okay. But it is... it's kept up with by things that were auctioned, and that's how we know how much money that we've obtained from that?
Well, this is just for gov deals. We have several auction sites. This is the biggest use... or the most used site.
Thank you. Did I hear a motion and a second over here? Okay. We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
What's it? Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Passes six.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution to express the willingness of the city of Conway to utilize state aid street monies for the Davis Street project overlay. And, Mr. Vincent, I know that you're going to come up and tell us all about this.
Anything you'd like to know? This is a resolution that the Arkansas Department of Transportation requires us to pass in order to accept their 90% of the construction funding for the Davis Street overlay.
Make a motion for adoption of the resolution. Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution. Any further discussion?
Yeah, what part of Davis Street?
That's what I was just getting ready to ask you.
Well, I think... we're either... I think we have completed, actually, the section south of Robbins, from Robbins to Dave Ward.
That really needed it.
It did. And this will be pretty much the rest of it, from Robbins to... how far is it? To the railroad tracks.
Yeah, Davis has been in need for a long time. And you'll tell a little bit about the sidewalk?
Well, we're working on... we're working on sidewalks in that area. We did Prince Street this year. We're going to be... we're working on Davis Street kind of simultaneously, not part of this project, but the project will require access ramps to be brought up the code, and so we're also working on replacing any of the running length of sidewalks that need to be repaired.
It's going to be nice.
Not much better.
Yes, it does.
Yep.
Robinson's fixing to look good, too.
I was talking about the sidewalk on Tyler, but yeah, the road looks great, too.
Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
This will be Resolution R1971. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Six to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to waive the competitive bid process to lease a motor grader for the transportation department. And Finley, go ahead.
Yes, we need a motor grader. We'd like to lease a motor grader. We got three quotes. I think primarily because we weren't exactly sure how to bid a lease, so we got three quotes. And that's about all I can tell you. If you need more information, I'm sure Jamie's right behind me.
Well, this says waive the competitive bid process, but it sounds like you got three.
We got three quotes. It's not... we didn't technically bid it, but we got three quotes.
Okay.
Make a motion to waive the three readings. Second?
I'm sorry, may I talk to you?
I... Ms. Bryce is not an affirmative to what I was asking.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero.
So what are you recommending?
Oh, sorry. The low one. It was...
Rigs?
It was rigs. It was rigs.
So moved.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll pick on second.
I make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance with the emergency clause.
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance with the emergency clause. Any further discussion?
Yes. I'm not the only one who want to know this. What is a motor grader?
Road grader.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Why you said road grader?
Say road grader next time.
It's a road grader.
Am I the only one that didn't know?
I'm sure that's not true.
Everybody's saying they didn't know either.
Okay. But I should clarify, there are actually two listed as rigs. There's Riggs Cat Financing and Riggs Arvest. And it was Riggs Arvest is the one we're going with. Correct, yes.
Any further discussion?
With the grader.
Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Those both passed six to zero. And I know where the first places are, you're going to use that.
We're going to go grade some roads. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Finley. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve a warranty deed for Stone Dam Creek Trail Improvement with Rush How Development Corporation. I got it in before the train.
Almost made it.
I made it. James was late.
Yeah. This item and the next item are both related. Essentially, what we're doing is getting a warranty deed dedication from Mr. Crafton related to the extension of the Stone Dam Creek Trail, and we're also issuing impact fee credits related to that as well. So this item, you can vote on except tonight. The next item is a first reading, and then you can approve it later. So we're kind of packaging multiple things because we've got grant applications for the extension, but we're also trying to give them an added benefit of being able to seek impact fee credits related to the land that's being provided. It's about $6,500 in credits.
I guess I make a motion to approve the warranty deed for Stone Dam Creek.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the warranty deed for Stone Dam Creek Improvement Phase Two with Rush How. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes six to zero.
James, hold tight, James, because now we're going to consider approving an impact fee credit agreement with Rush How Development for the Stone Dam Creek Trail Improvement Project, and this will be the first reading only.
It's... I've got it right here.
You're good?
Yeah, we are.
It's first reading only. No action will be taken tonight. It's consideration to approve an impact fee credit agreement with Rush How... Rush How Development for the Stone Dam Creek Trail Improvement Project. This is the first reading only. This impact fee credit agreement is entered into between Rush How and the city of Conway for property specifically known as Lot 50 of Oak Meadows Subdivision. We'll take action on that at the next council meeting, be it for y'all's approval or disapproval. Thank you, James. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance accepting the annexation of certain lands at the western terminus of Muskogee Road. And we have an ordinance to read for this particular item. It is ordinance O19108.
Make a motion we waive the three readings. Second?
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero.
I make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second?
Let me read something right quick.
I don't know if anybody's here to speak for it.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion?
It looks like it's about an eight-acre piece of land that's been released by Faulkner County. Judge Jim Baker's released this so that we can annex.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at. Mr. Garrett?
The ordinance, O19108. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Passes six to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezone property at 1920 South Boulevard and 212 Baradon Street from R21 to S1. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their regular meeting on October 21st this year, and at that time, the commission voted seven to one that this request be forwarded to city council with a recommendation for approval. Justin Brown voted in opposition to this, and he is the Planning Commission chairman. We have an ordinance to be read for this item. It is ordinance O19110... 109, I'm sorry. 109.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero. James, would you explain to everyone out in the audience and who's watching on TV the difference in what we're doing here with these properties?
Yes. So this is for the Baptist-Clergyte ministry to locate a new ministry center in that location. They recently purchased the property from UCA and are going through the rezoning process. R2A is sort of a standard duplex. S1 zoning is institutional zoning, so it's meant for religious centers and things like that. Staff had directed them towards S1 zoning. It did come with a variance on the lot size. Staff had directed them towards S 1 zoning. It did come with a variance on the lot size related to that, but it's the exact type of zoning that you would have for something like a collegiate ministry type of building. There was some opposition to the rezoning voiced at the public hearing. It's kind of a difficult situation because more than likely, if the city does not allow us to move forward, the property would likely be purchased by UCA again, developed, and then turned over to the collegiate ministry. That's not what they want to do. They want to work with the city through this process. If it were to go back to UCA in that situation, then we really wouldn't have any say. The city wouldn't have any say over it. And so they're being good partners with the planning department and trying to be good partners with the neighborhood. And so that's sort of one of the, one of the many steps in the process.
Was this Brown's opposition specifically? Did he say?
It was, it was related to the neighborhood, yeah.
Did the neighbors realize that if we didn't vote for it, UCA would take it back or take it and do what they want with it?
That became readily apparent at the meeting, yeah. I think it wasn't until that meeting that a lot of people did not realize.
And for, for the folks who are listening, UCA is a state agency, and so if it's their property, they do not have to buy it by our city code, so. It's a good thing.
I make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
It's the O 19109. Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Passes six to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor is an ordinance to rezone property at 2001 and 2011 Tyler Street. It presently is zoned R 2A. The proposed zoning is a PUD. This is property that backs up to the railroad track as I remember it. Yeah?
Yes, so this prop-
And this was reviewed by Planning Commission at their meeting October 21, and they voted seven, nothing to send this to City Council with a recommendation of approval. That's all I wanted to add.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero. James, would you explain again?
This item is essentially what they're doing. They live on one of the properties currently. It's Bell Urban Farm who's doing this, and they want to have a produce stand and grow more things on the property as well. And so and looking through the zoning code, staff looked, wow, how in the world can we accommodate this? Because it just didn't, it's kind of a newer use, and so we told them, let's, let's just bundle everything up. Your living, your house, and the other business that's associated with it and everything that you want to do, bundle it all up in one PUD and say grace over it and make it, and make it legal. So it was one of the most interesting public hearings I've been to. There was a lot of people there in support of it. This is something I think definitely will fulfill a community need. The library folks were there in support of it, so this is something that had a lot of cheerleaders. Yeah, it is.
Make a motion for the adoption?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
It's the O 19110. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Passes six to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor is an ordinance to rezone some property at the southeast corner of Museum Road and Lower Ridge Road from A 1 to R 1. This was presented to the Planning Commission at their meeting on October 21st, and the commission voted seven to nothing at that time that the city council, this be forwarded to City Council with a recommendation of approval. We have an ordinance to read, to read for this. It's ordinance O 19111.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero. James? So this, I've asked James, my bad, I've asked James to explain things because people will email me the next day after a council meeting and say, y'all read an ordinance on that, but what does that mean? So we've asked James to start explaining the difference, why we're going from one zoning to another. It's answered a lot of questions.
Yeah.
So you're not getting as many emails now?
Oh, no, I still get a lot of emails.
This item and the next item on the agenda are both related to a plat that is going to be coming in for Museum Meadows. It's a large residential development. So the rezoning is taking us from agricultural land to R 1 with a combination of C 2 on a small outlot at the corner of Museum and Lower Ridge Road. So the applicant intends to get a vehicle fueling center at that location or a gas station on that corner lot, perhaps some additional commercial there as well. But this will be a large single-family residential subdivision, and that's what the rezoning is intended to allow.
Mr. Jones, you're going to go ahead and make a motion for the ordinance?
Is it okay now?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
It's the O 19111. Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Passes six to zero.
Can we put a roundabout at this location? Where did Finley go?
Well, but this is one of the options for the connecting. Oh, no, no, it's, no, it's East German Lane.
It's East German. It's further out. Mr. Shaw, what do you think about that?
Were you asking me to speak? You know how long that?
No, no.
No, no, don't get too close. Don't get too close.
Answer the question, that's all we need.
Anybody has a question? The next three are actually interrelated on your calendar.
Have we done it?
I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a bad intersection. If you're coming out of there and trying to turn left.
It's an easy intersection compared to the one that goes up on 65.
I understand, yeah.
Have we done a car count or anything along those lines to see if it's warranted?
I don't know.
I wonder.
I don't know that we have, at that specific intersection, I know there's about 6,500 cars a day on Lower Ridge Road. So that, the State Highway Department has conducted a count on Lower Ridge. It's 6,400 just west of there. That is before Matthews Meadows was developed, and so there's, there's a lot of development pressure in that area that will continue to increase traffic levels there. So it's definitely, I can, I can pass that note along to look at that intersection.
Mr. Shaw, your only commercial property there is at that corner. Is that right?
Yes, there's about 2.6 or 7 acres. I'm Frank Shaw. I'm the applicant.
And there's about 2.6 acres on the corner that would front Lower Ridge and Museum. And you know how many times I've come in here asking for convenience stores from y'all when it didn't have a blue dot on it? Well, this corner has a blue dot on it. I wish Mr. Grimes were here to look at the blue dot. I know how much he likes to plan, but this is actually a blue dot corner on the long-range comprehensive plan, Mr. Grimes. And it's the 2018 plan, and it was on there before that. So I've looked for a location with a blue dot, which means C store, and I found one.
And that's where you would want to put a roundabout?
That's where I, I mean.
Would you, would you be willing to give us the right of way on your part, your portion?
Well, of course, but how much are you asking for?
I don't know. I mean, to do a roundabout, I mean, it's just going to make your development better, I mean, what you're doing in there.
I don't think there's anything right straight across the road. If you're going, if you're going north and running to Lower Ridge Road, I, I don't think there's anything built over there.
Well, but that might mean you have to bring it further back onto the.
You get some slope over there, Councilman Hawkins. You get a little slope on that side of the ridge. I'm not buying the north side, just the south. But now, just so you'll know, the, that's the east side of that intersection. The west side of that intersection is owned by the same family I'm buying this from. And so we would have access maybe to both those parcels to center it lower than north of Lower Ridge Road. If you put it north, you're going to get into a little more slope. If you go south, it's probably a little more doable, and there's not any trees in that area. You know, I'm looking at the long-range plan, and I see the long-range plan showing, you know, for purposes of planning, that there will be a road going north from this intersection around Churchill Live and tying back in with 65 North. So, and also see some other routes that Lower Ridge could take through the shopping center and even a plan for a road from Museum to tie in behind the theater. Well, these are all in the path of what we're planning to develop out there, and we'll be agreeable doing anything we can to facilitate traffic on that end of the city. I grew up over there, and it's always been a problem. And the only way we're going to get it fixed, we talked about this at, at, at planning, was if there's growth pressure, that'll result in improvements. And so we're providing the growth, and we expect y'all to do the improvements. Or help us with them. Yeah, something like that.
That southwest corner is just a field right now, right?
Both corners, this corner and the other one are both, are both fields and.
We shift it to the west just a little bit, couldn't we?
Could.
And it wouldn't take any of your.
If you, if you take, let me just tell you, I don't have a problem with a roundabout. It's a great idea. I love roundabouts, by the way. But if you take too, too much of the 2.76 acres, I should have asked for about three, because I could go a little further east and a little further south. So if you decide you need a roundabout, this is expensive property, okay? I'm not teasing. If you're going to need a roundabout, I may have to expand my footprint a little more to compensate for what the city's going to need for the roundabout. So I'll come back to you for that.
I think that's a reasonable request.
It's expensive before you buy it or after?
Yeah. What's happened is.
Is the value going up after you purchase it? That's what I'm trying to.
Matthews Meadows has been so successful, I've driven up the property values around me now. I'm paying the price. That's exactly what's happening. If you haven't been out there to look at it, it's really, a really nice development. This will be the same type, under $200,000 type homes, and they're really selling well, and it's dressed up well because of the conditions that you put on the PUD. This will not be a PUD. This is straight R 1. But I intend to covenant the same as the PUD requirements with the 812 pitch, no garage more than seven feet from the structure, nine-foot ceilings inside, and other, other requirements that we put on that one in the PUD, I'm going to covenant this one the same way. It's going to be, not, they're not going to be identical, but they're going to be homogeneous. It's going to look cute. And if you haven't been out there, I'd encourage you to go look at what Rous Coleman has done out there. They've done a really fine job of executing what we had planned.
They are nice.
So they've done well. So that's more than I meant to say, but you knew I do that, right?
Do we have a motion to waive the readings?
No, we do not.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
The O 19112. Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
That passes six to zero. That was 112?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
And here is the other piece of legislation that Mr. Shaw referenced, and that is the C 2 portion of this zoning, and he's already explained that. And thank you, sir, for doing that. In one thing, we have an ordinance to rezone 2.62 acres at the southeast corner that we just talked about. The other one was the R 1 portion of it, and this is the C 2.
Make a motion to waive the three readings?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero.
Make a motion for adoption?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Passes six to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor is consideration to approve a conditional use permit to allow automobile service station for 2.62 acres at the northeast corner of Museum Road and Lower Ridge Road. And this was reviewed by the Planning Commission, and they voted seven, nothing to send this to City Council with a recommendation of approval, with some conditions. You shall be subject to development pri, or development review prior to issuance of building permits. Access to the site shall be from Museum Road only. Access to Lower Ridge Road is prohibited, and any expansions or additions to structures, as well as changes to the use, shall require an amendment or a new conditional use permit. And we've already talked about if we take, if we ask for some of your property, we'll come back and revisit this. With those conditions, I move that we grant this conditional use permit.
Make a motion to waive the three readings? Excuse me, sorry.
Sure. The, there was no objection to me at the Planning Commission to not having any access to Lower Ridge Road. But at that time, the plat I'm working off of has an entrance from this subdivision adjoining the commercial piece. Now, I'm told by planning that they don't want me to have two entrances to Lower Ridge from the subdivision, but only one in the middle. And that changes my outlook on the commercial piece entirely. That's been since the Planning Commission that I got that information. So if I don't have any access from Lower Ridge, the people who come out of Museum Meadows, if that's what we end up calling it, they want to go on Lower Ridge, they're going to go through the roundabout or turn left, they're going to be on the road anyway. So the reason I didn't ask, I didn't object to not having an exit from the commercial property to the north was because there's a road right by it in the plat I'm working off of. Now they're going to ask me to take that road out and put it in the middle and take the road out on the east and have one entrance, and that limits the access to that commercial property. So everybody that wants to go to that commercial property is going to go through the roundabout and turn in, or anybody that is on Museum and wants to go east on Lower Ridge is going to make that circle. So I don't think it's going to create any more cars where you have access out of the commercial spot, or you have to go to Museum and then turn north and go left or right. So I agreed to that at that time, but since then, they've asked me to change my plat. So I'm in a quandary of how to proceed with this. I have to have this commercial spot to, to consider the value that I'm paying. It's a necessary part, but the restriction that I agreed to there has changed in focus and, as addressed to me in the meetings from the way it is that I approved and the way you're going to vote on it when you get to it later.
James?
Yeah.
Planning, planning's fine with that being removed. The first condition that is sort of part of the conditional use is that development review would occur on the site. This, the, this one is a little bit different in that we were trying to give something that Mr. Shaw, for Mr. Shaw to be able to market the property to a gas station without actually having a site plan. And so one of the conditions that the Planning Commission requested was that the site plan come back to them and impose conditions on that. So whether we, if we take that condition off, the Planning Commission still has the ability to, to do that based on the specific site. And so I, I don't necessarily have a huge opposition to limiting that specifically if there's some kind of access that's worked out, or it, or limited access, or something along those lines that that we still will have the ability to review it and it just not be a blank check.
But if he markets, markets it to someone to buy with pretense that there'd be an exit out there, I mean, so how does he?
I mean, normally with most companies, they, they know that they've got to go through the development review process and understand that.
That might make the roundabout more appealing.
Yes, definitely. Does that be going a lot slower than you?
How far is it from that intersection, James, to the eastern portion of that proposed commercial use property?
I don't have that off the top of my head.
I was trying to read a.
James, I think it says about 325.
I was, I was thinking a little bit farther than that.
About, yeah, about 300.
About 300.
300 feet.
So are we voting on this with this out or with this in?
It may be.
My concern was, when you say prohibited, that's a prohibition. If we can leave it to design and planning, I'm good with just how it is. But, but when it says prohibited, I did agree to that, but the situation has, has been changing. It's a moving target for me. And so if we just leave it to site and planning, I, I trust James Levi to do a fine job and to work with me on it. My, my deal to marketing, marketing it was, if it's not zoned, I can't sell it. Nobody will look. And that's, that's really what I'm looking for. If we can wait till the access and see what we have in the site plan, and then determine how we need to access it based on the subdivision entrances, then I am real good with that.
Well, and then we'll see about the roundabout and all that may be in the process and see where that pans out.
And this is, it's an enhanced level of review. Normally, development review, a site plan of that nature, it, it only stays internally with staff. So one of the conditions that Planning Commission set that they wanted to see as a condition was that it come back to Planning Commission. So there's some additional transparency with that, but additionally, it, it means an enhanced level of review.
And I agree to all of that.
Yeah.
Good.
But this is what the... We have a motion and a second to approve a proposal like that. Do we need to amend anything on this, Chuck?
Take out the prohibited in there. Prohibited in there.
Are we taking prohibited out? That's what I'm trying to find out.
Yeah, the one pertaining to access on Museum Road. I mean, not Museum, Lower Ridge.
Lower Ridge. Thank you.
I make a motion with that amended, James?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. To approve this conditional use permit with the amendment to taking...
Prohibited out, striking that out of it.
Okay, strike the prohibition, the prohibited. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero. Frank, I know that you think now we're talking roundabout. You've got a leg up on me, I know.
No, we got another...
Frank and I talk daily.
Do you?
We do.
I'm sorry.
We've been friends for a long time.
Frank liked the roundabout so much, he sold the house because of...
Mr. Hawkins? I'm sorry.
Final item here, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve a conditional use permit to allow restricted retail, general retail, and high-impact retail for property at 815 Exchange Avenue. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting in October. And they voted seven-nothing to send this to City Council with a recommendation of approval, including some conditions. Any uses that require outside display of goods unscreened from public view shall not be permitted. It's a different one than I've ever seen. Any outside storage of materials, goods, or equipment should be placed behind opaque screening or fence that's at least six feet high and no greater than eight feet in height. And any expansion or additions to the structure shall require an amended or new conditional use permit. Obviously, somebody has something in mind for this, don't they, James?
It's already there.
There you go.
Yes, this property is one of the Covington properties on 815 Exchange. Essentially, they took the existing structure and remodeled it and to accommodate a office retail location for someone that's doing kitchen countertops and whatnot. They have additional spaces in the building. It's a tenant-finish-out building. And so, we knew that more than likely that we were gonna have some additional conflicts with this in the future. So, that's why we left it pretty broad for restricted retail, general retail, and high-impact retail, essentially to allow them to not have to come back for an amended conditional use permit. It's a little bit weird because the property has remained zoned I3 and it's effectively not operating as an I3. It's operating as a commercial property. It sets a really good transition between the gas station, Honda World, and going into the industrial park back there. So, that's why we, the staff recommended that we give them some flexibility in how that's accommodated in the future.
I make a motion for adoption or passage of the conditional use permit?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this request with the items listed. And y'all did a great job on that too, by the way.
Did, yeah.
Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Mr. Mayor, that's all I've got.
All right. Next up, we have our Public Service Committee, which is sanitation, parks, and rec and physical plant. And Kiara's here to tell us about consideration to approve the bid proposal for Fifth Avenue Park.
Hi, so we are doing the second improvements for Fifth Avenue Park. And we put out an RFP. And this is just needing your approval to move for it with Hawn Enterprise.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the proposals for Fifth Avenue Park improvements. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is six to zero. Thank you, Kiara. Next up, we have an ordinance appropriating funds to purchase property associated with the Arkansas Department of Emergency Management Sugar Creek Mitigation Assistance Grant Project. Ms. Bryce? Is this the last house on that, Jamie? Or we have one more after this?
We have one that we have, we're working on the closing right now. And that's through the grant. This is not through the grant, but it's associated with the same project. And if y'all remember, this is the Hazard Integration Grant, $1.2 million. We're using, there's a 25% match. We're using street pay-as-you-go for that. I don't know if you received a color copy or not. I know the black and white's a little hard to read. But the house that we're trying to purchase is labeled E. And you can see that that's right in the middle of the project.
Y'all are aware, these are those houses that flood on Sugar Creek. And Adam is working with us to purchase those. They'll be torn down. I think our plan is to build a trailhead there for our trails and parks.
I make a motion to waive the three readings?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero.
Make a motion for adoption?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
The O-19-114. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
This is six to zero. Thank you, Jamie. Next, we have a resolution authorizing an application to the Arkansas Economic Development Commission's Division of Community Assistance Grant to relocate the original Toad Suck Ferry from Peel, Arkansas, to the Old Ferry out here. And this has been Jack Bell's program since day one. For those of y'all, Sandy Brewer, who passed away, was the city councilman, gave me an old life preserver from the original Toad Suck Ferry. And I have given that to Jack. Jack, Marsha with you? Come on up and tell us about it.
This is actually the Central Arkansas Planning and Development District is helping with this grant, Leanne over there. It's a $50,000 grant. We got a bid or a quote, I guess, or an estimate from Napples for a turnkey pickup and delivery of this for about $84,000. This will go a long way toward paying for that if we get it. The ferry or the barge is up at Peel and we'd like to get it back. We have a park that's named after it, Old Ferry Landing Park. And we'd like to get the Old Ferry back. Any questions?
Where is Peel, Arkansas?
Boom, Bull Shoals. This has been used, this barge was used as a ferry, although it didn't have paddle wheels and all that. It was used with a tug up until a couple of years ago. And it was a backup and now it's out of service. And the highway department owns it and is willing to sell it.
I make a motion we approve this resolution?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this request to apply for this grant to move the original Toad Suck Ferry. Any further discussion?
I appreciate you bulldogging this. This would be kind of a neat deal.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Mr. Garrett?
It's the Resolution R-1972. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Next, we have a consideration to approve the disposal of inventory for the Department of Information Technology. Mr. Aaron Knight?
Thanks, sir. This is pretty standard. We are looking to get rid of some old systems and auction them off. One thing that's a little different this time, we did have a request from the district court to provide some computers to some of the other facilities that don't maybe have the budget within the county to replace equipment. So, there are six of these items that would be donated to Damascus, Felonia, and Mayflower District Court facilities. So, they, of course, get wiped and it's on them to install them and set them up. But that's part of that request.
I make a motion we approve this removal of items?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this request for the disposal of inventory. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. All right, next up, we have an ordinance appropriating funds for the Truck Journeyman Program at the Conway Fire Department. Chief Winter?
Yes, we received a $2,000 donation from Walmart to help fund our Truck Journeyman Program. We're just asking for acceptance.
Make a motion we waive the three readings?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero.
Make a motion for adoption?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? You'll tell us a little bit about it, chief.
It's the Truck Journeyman Program. The trucks are kind of a different animal. The bigs got the ladders on top. And so, we put together a program to train the younger firefighters. It's a week-long program. Our firefighters helped develop the program, some of the guys, captains that work on the truck. And they've traveled around other departments and they've put together a really good program to teach these young firemen about that truck and how to operate it.
They all, they call them truckies when they graduate.
Thank you, sir.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
The ordinance, O-19-115. Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Six to zero. Thank you, chief.
I've got that as 114, Mr. Garrett.
That's what I was gonna say. I think we got off. I've got it as 114 as well.
I had C2 as 114.
I had that C2 as 113.
Item 13 is 112. Item C2 is 13, and this should be 14.
See, well, let's stick with my number. If it's wrong, I'll do a correction.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Always you wanna do it wrong in the beginning.
I don't think it's wrong.
It is.
Come on up, chief. Next up, we have an ordinance appropriating funds for various entities for the Conway Police Department.
You don't argue with me, it is being...
Good evening. This is just a general accounting ordinance. You've seen before. There's nothing extraordinary on this you haven't seen before, just reimbursement funds.
I make a motion to waive the three readings?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Make a motion for...
No. He's asking...
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Passes six to zero.
I'm trying to get the ordinance...
I make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion?
Trying to get your numbers right.
Mr. Garrett?
I got it as O-19-116. Mr. Hawkins?
They're all gonna be wrong, yes.
Mr. Pruitt? Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ever seen a hard-headed guy before till I saw you?
Next up, we have an ordinance appropriating funding for the Conway Shop Secure for the Conway Police Department, a very good and well-received program. Chief?
Yeah, believe it or not, Christmas is upon us again. So, we're likely to continue our operation Shop Secure, which we pay overtime funds to our police officers to patrol our shopping centers during the Christmas season. This will start on Black Friday and will end probably around 6:00 PM on Christmas Eve.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Make a motion for adoption?
That passes six to zero.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
O-19-117. Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Passes six to zero.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Will we have corrective ordinances for each of the inappropriately-named ordinances? I'm kidding.
That's Chuck thing.
I'm just messing with Mr. Garrett.
I'll send you an email.
Except we have a consideration to approve the annual fitness facility for the city of Conway, Ms. Maybury Williams.
RFP was published and opened, and the city of Conway received two proposals, one from 365 Fitness, one from Sync Fitness. The Employee Benefits Committee reviewed the proposals, completed a weighted evaluation on each proposal, and the committee recommends Sync Fitness for 2020.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this request for our annual fitness facility for the city of Conway. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Six to zero. Next up, it's consideration to approve a dental insurance for fiscal year 2020 for the city of Conway. Ms. Maybury Williams?
An RFP was published and opened for 2020 dental benefits. The Employee Benefits Committee met and reviewed the proposals and completed a weighted evaluation on each proposal. The committee recommends Blue Cross Blue Shield, options 1A and 1B, without a broker. This proposal includes our current dental benefits with Blue Cross Blue Shield. The total premium increase was 7.8%.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the dental insurance for fiscal year 2020. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is six to zero. Next up, we have consideration to approve the life insurance for fiscal year 2020 for the city of Conway. Ms. Williams?
The RFP was published. The Employee Benefits Committee met and reviewed and completed a weighted evaluation on each proposal. The committee recommends U.S. Able Life without a broker. They also recommend that we go with U.S. Able's Life's proposal with no age reduction for 2020. That rate would remain at $1.80 per employee per month for the coverage. But after further discussion, we respectively request that you approve an increased benefit without the age reduction, which will cost the city approximately $15,900 more per year. The life insurance that our employees currently receive is a $10,000 policy. That has not changed. I know since 2003, it has not increased. And this would increase it to a $25,000 policy per person.
So moved.
How much is this going to cost?
$15,000.
$15,900. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the life insurance for fiscal year 2020. Any further discussion? This is a good thing for our employees and I appreciate it. Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes six to zero. Next is consideration to approve the medical insurance for the City of Conway. Ms. Williams.
An RFP was published for the medical benefits. We received proposals from the AML Municipal Health Benefit Fund, our current vendor, Arkansas Blue Cross Blue Shield, Health Advantage, and HJC Core Source. The Employee Benefits Committee met with representatives from each of the vendors that submitted a proposal. The committee reviewed the proposals and completed a weighted evaluation on each proposal. The committee recommends the Arkansas Municipal League Health Benefit Fund for 2020. This will decrease the city's cost approximately 8% on January 1.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the medical insurance for the City of Conway, of the Arkansas Municipal League. Any further discussion?
I would like to say something if I could. I sat in on two of these meetings, and I have never heard so much grumbling about the Arkansas Municipal League plan. The first meeting I sat in on, there were eight committee members in attendance that day, and of the eight, seven of them had something negative to say about the Municipal League plan in one form or another. The second meeting, which was a presentation meeting I sat in on, there were an additional five negative comments from the members of the committee in one form or another about the Arkansas Municipal League plan. If we were ever going to get away from the Arkansas Municipal League plan and get into a real health insurance plan, this would be the year to do it because our claims history has gone down. It is, it's gone down by a substantial amount, and that is the reason Municipal League is willing to give us a break on our cost right now. I don't know what the total dollar figures were. Ms. Maybury Williams, do you know that information?
Do you mean this?
What the total dollar figure spend would be with the Municipal League and then with the other two proposals.
I don't have that with me. The savings for this year with the Municipal League would be $385,397.
If they don't have a mid-year increase.
That's correct.
Which they do, they've done that for the last few years.
They've done it two, two of the last three years.
I wonder why the committee voted for the Municipal League insurance. Why they vote for it if most of them were against it?
Well, and I've asked, I've asked Ms. Bryce to hold on to all of the votes on that. It is late in the year, so we have an issue with that if there were going to be a change made. Number one, this would be the year to do it, but number two, it's almost too late in the year to do it.
Is it too late? Can we vote on it next meeting?
We really need to get moving on this, the open enrollment for January 1.
I guess we haven't seen any other numbers. I mean, you know, we.
We don't know what, we don't know what the costs are, yeah.
On the Health Advantage, it would have been a higher cost to the city. The Health Advantage, Blue Cross Blue Shield was another true insurance, was not self-insured. It was an insurance plan, and it would have cost the city more. And it would have, it would have cost the employee more, and the co-pays would have been higher, and the benefits wouldn't have been quite as rich. And I think that's why they voted for the Municipal League.
And that's why I would like to see your notes, Ms. Bryce, on all of the, how the votes were tallied and what the parameters were on how votes were taken. And I think you told me you would have that information that would be available, yeah. I'm not sure who comes up with those. I don't know, you know, we've done this on bidding out T-shirts and things like that in the past, and there's been, seemed to be no rhyme or reason to me why those exact parameters were put forth. And I'd like to see the parameters that were laid out as to how things were voted on. I don't think we can make a move on anything else at this point in time because it is too late in the year to do it. I think we have to approve the Municipal League, but I would like to see us take a look again for a July 1 renewal, which is going to be a renewal time for the Municipal League. And let's do this thing right this time because it was not done right, in my opinion.
Couple of things. One of the reasons we were in a hurry to get it done tonight, I can answer that, is because we're trying to finish up our budget. However, since all the other insurances have been approved, then Tyler can take the Municipal League's number, Blue Cross's number, and the other company's number and give us three different budgets. So that's not going to put us in our crunch for time. So if y'all want to, we can table this tonight and vote on health insurance in two weeks.
But do we have enough time?
I don't think we do. I think we need, I think my personal opinion is we need to go ahead and move on it.
But why are you?
I was gonna say, but your point is to start this process earlier next year.
No, my point, my point is July 1 is coming, and there is an actual renewal that's coming up July 1. And we need to take a look at it, and we need to take a look at it at that time.
I encourage the employees to reach out to us if they really have a problem with the health insurance.
I'm telling you, I've sat in two meetings, and they wear that program out.
Well, I was gonna say, that's all we've heard is that, and I was surprised that we actually, because every year it's been the only option we've had.
Yeah, that is true because our claims were out.
It's been a claims problem.
Doing our premiums by about 148%.
Now we have the upper hand a little bit.
If we go ahead and approve it tonight because of the timeframe, I would still be interested in seeing what the numbers would have looked like. Because I think that gives us an idea of what to hope for.
I know Tyler has run the Health Advantage with Blue Cross Blue Shield.
It's gonna cost the employees more.
We don't necessarily have to approve it tonight. I mean, what's the drop, what's the drop dead date for the Municipal League?
Well, we've got to get.
You've got to get open enrollment.
Open enrollment going, and it's hard to catch people between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Well, would y'all be willing to have a special call meeting sometime during the week?
I would.
This next week, I mean, like earlier is better.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to table this tonight?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table the.
Until we get, until we see what the actual numbers are.
Yeah. I wonder if it would be of us to have the, have the committee, some of the committee people there just to address anything.
Could be a bad idea.
If they're able to get away and be able to come.
I think our answer may be next year, and it will cost, it will cost us a little money on the front end, but I think it'll save us in the long run. And I think we would be wise to take RFQs for a broker next year. Someone who is from the industry, who works in it every day and can broker some of this.
What does it mean not to have a broker?
With a broker?
What does it mean not to have a broker?
Okay, that's what I'm saying, you get a broker next year.
We have been without a broker since 2005. We left our broker the same year UCA left theirs to save the city some money.
So we have to pay them a piece of the pie if we get a broker, yeah.
About 3% of the premium.
Yeah, brokers are expensive, but in the long run, they can say.
They're watching out for interest.
They can actually work a better deal. Because they work in every day.
And it could be the cost of a clerical one position, a admin one position. Yeah, could be as low as that rather than 3%.
At least in your account, your committee's done a great job. Y'all beat the bushes pretty good, so don't feel like it's anything like that. I think it's probably some of the comments from the committee that's brought this up.
Is there a rep from each city department? Is that what makes up the committee? So they hear from the employees or the employees in that?
And they are the ones that voted.
Yeah, yeah.
We have a motion and a second to table at this time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll get on this pretty quick. We'll get on tomorrow. All right, next we have some new business. Thank you, Lisa. Next, we have some new business. It's an ordinance, and Chuck's gonna explain this. It's Amending Ordinance Number O-3109, providing for procedures from municipal candidates to file nominating petitions for the City of Conway. Mr. Clausen.
Yeah, this is just an ordinance, amending an ordinance O-03109. Municipal offices or nonpartisan or independent candidates, in the past, it's been 20 days before the preferential primary, up until noon the day before would be the filing period. The county clerk, Margaret Darter, approached me and requested that I take a look at this and shorten that period of time. It's still within the statute to seven days to be more in line with other races and candidates filing periods.
Yeah, I make a motion to waive the readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's a six to zero.
Make a motion for adoption and the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance with the emergency clause. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett.
O-19-118. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.